Question, you can type it into the chat box at that time. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Commissioner Freed.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining us here today. We all know this has been a difficult time for our schools as we have worked to keep children and educators safe from COVID while ensuring that they have the tools they need to stay on track with their education. It has been challenging in a number of ways, and so many people from janitorial staff to school nutrition professionals and bus drivers and teachers have stepped up to do what's best for our kids at enormous costs. Our state school board members who are locally elected to make decisions about the safety of their kids they represent know this all too well, especially those in districts that have required face coverings in schools in an effort to prevent the spread of COVID in schools and among our children not yet eligible to be vaccinated. Many of them have experienced intimidation, threats, vandalism, and other types of harassment simply for doing their jobs to try to protect our children. Unfortunately, our governor is fanning the flames of this harassment and siding with extremists who are threatening school board members as he promotes an anti-children agenda. What I'd like to talk about today are the real-world implications of Governor DeSantis's decisions to side with extremists and to stroke culture wars over science instead of keeping Floridians and in particular, our children safe. I am so grateful to the amazing group of school board members from across the state who we have here today, who have bravely stood up for what's right in the face of challenges never imagined. With that, I'd like to introduce Jane Goodwin from Sarasota County, Christine Kraus from Seminole County, Sarah Lironardi from Broward County, and Jennifer Jenkins from Brevard County. We are so grateful to have you all here with us today. I'd like to jump right into our discussion because I really want to use this opportunity to give you all the platform to share your experiences. So I'm just kind of go around, you know, and let's start with kind of the list that I just went through, starting with Jane, then Christine, and Sarah, and then Jennifer. How was the experience of being a school board member changed as a result of this politicization of masks in schools?
Well, we're a nonpartisan board commissioner, and all of a sudden there's a polarizing political agenda at the board table, which I think is not a good thing for school boards. I've always enjoyed the fact that we are nonpartisan, so it's been very difficult, very challenging, and politicization of the process of education like I've never seen.
Christine?
Thank you, Commissioner. In our district, Seminole County, our meetings have been very well attended, and we too are nonpartisan. However, we're experiencing a huge partisan divide, and somehow we lost the issue that this is a public health matter rather than parental consent or in addition to parental consent. And our job as board members is to keep our students and staff safe. That's priority one. It will always be priority one. So we've lost focus on many of the issues that we need to be addressing in order to focus on our mask rule. We don't have a mandatory policy. We have a parent opt-out policy, and that's in effect till the 29th. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. You know, I think that I'm not stepping out of turn here by saying that all of us ran for school board because we love children and we love teachers and educators. And I've found that the politics around this and the constant back and forth and fighting about it and the dangerous rhetoric around it has been a massive distraction from, you know, the day-to-day business of educating kids. That's why we all got into this. And it's really unfortunate that we're now being distracted from that. And I know that we're all still working hard towards that, but all of our attention needs to be on that. And I wish that's what people were coming to school board meetings and talking about was, you know, educating kids.
Yeah, I second that. I feel like the politicization of every single topic is not hard to see. And, you know, when you have state representatives and the governor and grassroots organizations coming to the table just to stir chaos and controversy, you know, they've held our jobs hostage, and we're unable to tackle things that we actually ran for these offices for, you know? I'm not allowed to have conversations about inequities in our district or talk about the fact that we have 150 teacher vacancies in our county. And these are things that we really should be focusing on and spending time addressing and fixing. But instead, again, we've been held hostage by politics.
And how have you women seen an increase in dangerous extremist rhetoric affected teachers, you know, and other school staff, and has it affected the children? That the whole reason why we're here. You know, but you've seen this increase in the political rhetoric, you know, how's it been impacting others in the community as far as, again, these teachers and staff and our children? I don't want anybody to talk.
So I began, I really, I really think that it hasn't affected teachers as much. I think they still live in their classrooms. I think where it has affected the individual schools is when there was picketing outside the schools coming to and fro when we had our mandatory mask mandate in place, which has since been rescinded since our numbers have gone down drastically thanks to masking. But I would say that it's very difficult to run a school board meeting and do the business of the school board when you have three hours of non-issue-oriented comments, many of which are inflammatory, some of which are absolute swearing at the station, others doing various different things in the audience, clapping and roaring. It becomes like I've said before, a comedy club, but it really isn't a comedy club. It is a board meeting, and we're trying to do the business of the board. So it's been very difficult. But I think it's a fringe issue. I think our community still believe that we are doing the right thing by students. We are a strong public school network. And, you know, I feel that this is an outlier, if you will, and we just have to maybe get through it. Although there were winds of foot in Tallahassee, I understand that, but I'm an optimist. So I'm hoping that, you know, just as COVID has gone down a bit for most of our communities, thank God, that, you know, this too will pass and we'll move forward stronger than ever because it's been a very untenable time for all of us. Yes, we've had a board member who had people visiting their home with bullhorns and so forth. And we, and I worry about the children that these people are bringing to some of these events. I worry about the children who look frightened to me that are sitting in our board meetings, hearing all of this. What about our children and what statement are we making to them? And it's a very frightening experience for them, and that's who we should be talking about, the kids and the students in our schools.
I don't personally know of harassment to our teachers. I would say that it has impacted morale, certainly, just as our communities are divided on best practices, probably our teachers and staff are as well. What's been difficult in our district because we have the parent opt-out is teachers trying to track the students that do not have to wear a mask or that may want to wear a mask and come to school even though their parents have said no, they don't need to. Parents that believe in masks and protecting their children and asking the teachers, can their students sit by other masked children? Well, that's not allowed by the governor. We can't, we can't separate based on mask-wearing or mask use. So we have to, I think, look at this as what is best practice, and the kids are the center and forefront of that. We keep reminding them to distance where they can, to wash their hands frequently. If their parents told them to wear a mask, please wear it properly. And just to recognize that, you know, the Parent Bill of Rights has usurped some of the medical requests, I think. And so we're doing the best we can within the parameters given to us by our governor.
Yeah, you know, I think that first and foremost, teachers, educators, students want to feel safe in school. And the fact that this has all become for debate has really impacted them. And here in Broward County, we had, you know, like Jane kind of alluded to, we've had parents picketing, community members picketing outside of schools at the beginning of the school year. And it escalated to the point where even one parent allegedly assaulted a student walking into school. You know, that's just unacceptable. People want to go to public school. They want to feel safe. And people claiming that they're doing this for parental choice or, you know, student safety, not if you're assaulting a child, you know? And so, you know, kids deserve to go to school. Educators deserve to go to work, and they deserve to feel safe.
Yeah, I wish I had the same optimism as Jane, but unfortunately, with the things I've experienced, I absolutely do not. Here in Brevard, it's not just about masks. It's a way bigger issue that I feel. I feel grateful that I've had the opportunity to have this conversation, but I think it's a conversation that we really need to focus on and continue is that, you know, this is, this is an organized, calculated effort that is really just taking a hold of local government, not only across the state of Florida, but now, of course, we see it across the nation. You know, I'm sure people are well aware of the threats that I've received and the harassment I've received and the people outside my home and brandishing their weapons and inviting themselves into my kitchen table with DCF investigators, following me everywhere I go, private investigators creating false websites and narratives about my life. But we've received threats of our administrator and teachers over things that are fabricated or exaggerated by state representatives. State representatives who bring the governor to this county to have conversations about that. And it's terrifying. It's terrifying for me to know that a personal vendetta of an elected official is now driving these real credible threats and harassment to everyday people, people who have taken a job to service our children in this community for very little reward other than their souls. It's scary, and I think it's a really serious conversation that we need to continue to focus on.
And I know, Jennifer, you just mentioned this, but if anybody else has any, or if you want to elaborate more too, if anybody feels comfortable discussing, have you or your family experienced any threats to your safety because of your work at the school board? Okay. And obviously, Jennifer, yours is well documented now, and so certainly, we hear you, we see you, and it's heartbreaking that it has come to this point, that this is what's going on in our communities. And when you just were doing what was right for your community. What do you all think it can be done to calm some of these tensions in our communities that we've been seeing lately? Because I think to Jennifer's point, this is a bigger picture at this point. It's not just about, you know, masks in our schools, that it's becoming a culture war. So what else, you know, kind of as we're seeing this happening across our state and across our country, any ideas of how we can kind of de-escalate some of this tension?
Can I go out of order here? I've been saying this for quite a while, but, you know, when these behaviors are ignored, when there's no accountability for these actions, they become normalized and acceptable, and they get reinforced. And if we don't, as citizens, start putting pressure on the people we've elected to serve us and protect us, to do what is right, to investigate what is a credible crime, to support people who think that, you know, some of these threats might rise to the level of federal involvement, then we're never going to de-escalate this. It's going to just continue to brew and grow and seep deeper and deeper and deeper into our community and into our government, which is something really, really concerning.
I agree with everything that Jennifer said. I know that I've personally had some threatening texts of people that I didn't know had my cellphone number after the first meeting when we mandated masks back in August the 20th of this year. And I turned that over to law enforcement. And that's something we all need to be aware of, is that, you know, this is the kind of a thing that we can build a case on and that law enforcement is interested in hearing about threats to your personal safety. And this is how I felt about several occasions that I had. And you all may have seen our school board chair, Shirley Brown, who's on television a couple of times, several times after her initial visit from some folks at her home. And if you looked at any of those pictures of those people with bullhorns out in front of her house, you'd see a frightening look on the faces of children that were brought along. And again, that's what bothers me, but we can't let this go. We have to take action. We know that there has a national campaign on some of these issues because they come to our board meetings with something written out that someone else has written out for them. And it's assault on teaching the truth about history. It is an assault on sex education, on LGBTQ, on BLM CRT, which we're not teaching, but, and now on social and emotional learning, which has somehow been morphed into CRT, which I don't get that at all, along with no masks, no vax. And the vaccination piece scares me. I encourage everyone every day to get a vaccination. I just was lucky enough to get my booster last week and my flu shot at the same time. It's really great. But I encourage everyone that can to be vaccinated. My whole family is, and yes, we've had breakthrough cases in COVID here that could have been much worse had we not been vaccinated. But we have to do all we can to look at this because I'm afraid the Department of Health now will look at us unfavorably in vaccinations, not only for the COVID situation we have today, but measles, mumps, and the other things that we have always expected our children to come back vaccinated against. And I'm afraid that we are going to be in peril if these things continue. And this is one of the things that's on my radar, is that aspect of it is completely out of whack as far as I'm concerned. But the Parent Bill of Rights is the big new shiny object, and it was written hastily, and now they're going to go back in and make that stronger. And although I feel parents have a, they're in the partnership with us every day. I talk to parents all the time. I'm always working behind the scenes to help our students, to help our children. But we cannot turn everything over to a group that largely, yes, has the interest of their child, but does not have the knowledge and the expertise to be making decisions on curriculum and health and some of these other issues. So it's a frightening time. Let that be said, it's a frightening time, and where we go from here is a great concern to all of us.
Thank you. Our district, Seminole County, have also experienced the rage against CRT and LGBTQ. We formed a committee, a superintendent committee last year on equity, and there's even protests at those meetings they attend, and they record every word. They want to understand we use some enrichment programs, Brain Pop, and they cited there was a sign that said BL. And so now they're convinced that we're teaching CRT, which is not a K-12 curriculum. That is for a deeper-level college curriculum. My son and I were both, he's a young adult. He attended a meeting on LGBTQ. We were trying to recognize June as LGBTQ month, and we were called out personally at the board meeting. I've been called, you know, verbal attacks. I've been called a Marxist. I've been called a satanic worshiper. There were cars with chalk paint that said recall Kraus. But the work that I'm doing is what is best for all children. I will always hold that at my core. And I don't know how we get out of this. There are clearly divides in opinions. And I think keeping communication as open as we can. I agree so much with what Jane said. Our teachers, principals, and staff, they are the experts. And for parents to come in and dictate what it is we should be teaching, it's like going to a car mechanic for when you need a heart monitor. It just doesn't make sense. We've got to figure out how to earn back trust and respect from our communities because our parents are tremendous partners. We have a huge need and respect for their volunteering, their involvement with their students. Students will perform better when their parents are involved. It's a given. So we've got to figure this out, but it is a bigger, it is a bigger picture than just the masks.
You know, I think that's a really good question, and I've spent a lot of time thinking about what can change the level of vitriol and what can change the level of misinformation being spread. And, you know, I guarantee if you watch any of our school board meetings, you know, school board members sit there and we take those comments, and we don't say anything back. We certainly don't match that vitriol that we receive. And a lot of us, I'm sure, are receiving daily emails telling us that we should be ashamed of ourselves. You know, I've also been called a Marxist. I've been called a bimbo bitch, and I even had someone call, say something this morning on my personal social media, saying the end is near. And in no way do any of us reciprocate that, right? We try to model respectful behavior as good leaders do. And the one thing I keep coming back to is, and I know that we are all, you know, in nonpartisan seats, but this vitriol and this rhetoric is coming from one political party led by someone who is not doing anything to tamp down that rhetoric. And so, you know, what I keep coming back to is if we want to, you know, make this a civil conversation again, we really need a change of leadership at the state level. You know, I don't see a lot of state reps and state senators from the Republican Party speaking out in defense of school board members, and I don't see the governor doing anything to tamp down this dangerous rhetoric.
And I guess on that, you know, that question, you know, when you've seen, do we believe that the governor, and again, I'm not trying to make this a partisan issue at all, but that the governor and, you know, other politicians have really kind of contributed to this extremist and seeing how this is impacting our communities instead of trying to be diplomatic and trying to de-escalate the tension, almost like they have increased it and almost have given them a green light for this extremist and some of the interaction that you all have had with some of these community members. I see lots of shaking of heads in agreement. You all don't have to talk about it, but I see lots of shaking of heads, which is unfortunate because you all, and Jennifer, you're more than welcome. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, I have no, I have no problem with this conversation becoming partisan because I'm with Sarah on this, you know? I'm absolutely not going to say all Republicans are attacking me and are terrible people by any means, but it's a fact. The people who are harassing me and threatening me all belong to one political party. You know, these supposed nonpartisan grassroots organizations, I have yet to meet anyone who's a part of that organization that is registered to the Democratic Party. This is politicized. It's being made political by one party. And unfortunately, those are the people who are in power in the state of Florida. And unfortunately, those are the people that we are to rely on for support and our safety. And when, again, when the governor takes time out of his day to come to my county to not even speak to me or call me and have the nerve one time to even kick me out of his press conference because he said it wasn't open to the public, that's concerning to me. That's concerning.
And before we open it up for any questions, for questions from the press, is there anything else that you would like the press or the public to understand about the way that the rhetoric is impacting our communities before we open it up to the questions? Or anything else you'd like to add that people should know about? Go to Jane.
Well, I would just say that, you know, we're doing the best job that we can, but for those school boards, and I know policy is such an important issue with all of us. We all are evaluating our policies at all times. But everybody needs to look at their policy. We have looked at it for months and months now. Our public comment policy, we need to put some guardrails on this of how long we allow these public comments to last, how much time we're devoting to that, when it occurs in a meeting. We love to hear comments about the agenda or things that are appropriate at a school board meeting. We don't always hear that. Things that involve students or teachers or the administration should be dealt with directly with either the administration of a school or with a superintendent, not at a school board meeting. So a lot of things that are brought up, along with personal insults to all of us, are these things. But I would encourage everyone to look at their policies and make sure that they work best for each board, depending on how they appropriately think that public comments should be handled. And I would also say that for us, a lot of the people that come to us and speak over and over again every time we have a board meeting are the same people, some of them without children, some of them have never been in a school, some of them from other counties, and I know they're taxpayers, so even if they are homeschooling and have a bad feel for public schools, they have the right. We understand that. But we're trying to segment out those things that affect the agenda, which will be handled at the board table and the appropriate time before we handle new business. And then those people who want to speak on something else at the end of the board meeting. And we're gonna, we're gonna hope that that works out and that that will offer us a little more sanity in this space that we call boardsmanship.
Thank you. I would like to add that personally, I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned for our students because I feel like we're teaching a whole generation that my rights matter more than any other possibility. And that is not the nature of children. Children want to be helpers. They want to love their teacher. They want, that's their nature. And it's very worrisome that we've gotten into my rights matter more than the collective good. So that would be the only thing I think I would want to add.
Okay. With that, thank you, ladies, for joining us here today, and thank you for everything that you are doing for your communities. And at this point, I will open it up for questions.
Journalists, if you have questions, you can type them into the chat box at this time. I see one from Mike Vaselinda to Commissioner Freed. What do you think about the report that Dr. Lopato would not wear a mask in Senator Polsky's office?
I mean, we put out a statement or a tweet over the weekend when I saw that happen. This is supposed to be our Surgeon General, you know, somebody who has taken an oath to do no harm, to protect the people of the state of Florida. And I am severely disappointed that he didn't have enough respect and courtesy for a, not only just a fellow Floridian, but a state senator who was going through, told him that she was going through, has a medical condition regardless of what it is, and that he not only refused to do so, including his staffers, but from my understanding, he's also unvaccinated. So this is a wrong message for the people of our state, and certainly, this is not somebody And certainly, this is not somebody who should be leading our state during a healthcare crisis. And it's unfortunate that he believes that his job is to play politics and not be a healthcare administrator.
Thank you. The next question is from Forrest Saunders with Scripps. He is curious to see what the panel thinks about the governor resisting federal efforts to help investigate these threats.
Jennifer, you can go.
Okay, thanks. Oh, I have an opinion for sure. I think it is wildly irresponsible to say that. That it is inappropriate for crimes to be investigated, to allude to the fact that. The federal government would be stepping in and investigating people for just speaking out of public comments. If there is a crime being committed, they have every right to step in and take action. And I can speak personally. You know, I had a false DCF allegation made against me and my local police department is doing everything they can for me. The most amazing detective is helping me, but at some point, I'm very fearful that he can only take it so far. And I will be left with an unfounded DCF claim for the rest of my life. And I feel strongly that if the federal government was willing to come in and step in, that they they might be able to take it further and figure out. Who made this false claim and hold them accountable so that it doesn't happen to anybody else.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I'd just like to add, you know, I think it is really par for the course with this administration's treatment of public education in general. I mean, they they were late to apply for billions of dollars in federal aid. It's no surprise to me that they don't care about keeping us safe.
Okay, thank you. We have a follow-up question from Danielle Brown with the Florida Phoenix. Her question to that point is, should violent threats and harassment to school board members be better addressed by local or federal agencies? Do you want to take that one?
Oh, I can start. You know, certainly, you know, you start with your local. Any type of threat, any type of harassment as public defender, you know, I saw that too in Latshaw County where local law enforcement should be the first line of defense. But then if you are seeing that the local law enforcement is not stepping up to the plate, you keep expanding that bubble outward. And and so it's the point that somebody's got to protect these women and somebody needs to step up to the plate. And so if it's not going to be our local, if it's not going to be FDLE. Then we have to go to the federal government for it. So a local is always best. But if we are finding that they unfortunately have become partisan themselves and can't do their jobs, then we, of course, have to to expand out to make sure that they have the right protections. The right investigators involved in this and and criminal allegations are serious and charges if they find that there is actual evidence to support that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. The next question from Kirby Wilson at the Tampa Bay Times is for Commissioner Freed. If you got into a room with some of these people who show up to school board meetings worried about the prospect of forced masking or critical race theory. What would you say to them? How would you take the temperature down on these debates?
Same thing I do every day in my life, you know, that everybody has a right to their opinions and sitting around at a table and having a conversation, not a yelling match. That only escalates the conversation and escalates the tension, but to have a sit-down conversation to revoke, rebuke some of the. The misinformation, disinformation that is being discriminated. I mean, you heard from school board members and we know this to be the case. Critical race theory is not taught in K through 12. And so when we're sitting and having these debates about our education system, that is a false narrative. And so being able to get into a room, I would welcome that opportunity to sit down and have an intellectual conversation about. These issues and to bring the tension down because that is the only way that we're going to move through this. Is that people keep talking to one another, not yelling, not threatening, but conversations in a respectful manner. That is the only way we as a civil society is going to get through this heightened tension and extremism that is happening in our state and our country. And so we all need to just keep talking, respect one another, go back to, you know, the the Torah and the Bible, you know, love thy neighbor. We live in in a civil society and a community. And we've got to learn again how to respect one another and be able to have a dialogue that doesn't escalate into tension and anger and yelling and and violent threats.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. The next question is from Teresa with the Florida Channel. She asks, do you feel law enforcement is doing enough and is capable of handling the board meeting that got out of control? As the Brevard Sheriff said last week. Also specifically, are you saying the mask incidents with the young girl with Down syndrome was exaggerated?
I'm gonna assume that question is for me. You know, the Brevard County Sheriff's Office works with Brevard Public Schools and. I am grateful for every sheriff officer that we have inside of our boardroom. I believe they are, they are very capable. Of containing the behavior within that room, but also for protecting us as board members. They have been fantastic to the threats that I have faced. They escort me to and from my car. During recess, they make sure that we are okay and protected and they don't, they don't, they don't leave my presence until my car is pulled away. So. You know, whatever, whatever political dynamic is going on there with the sheriff, I don't, I don't even care to speak on it. I respect and I appreciate every single one of the officers that are inside of our district and our boardroom. When it comes to the instance with one of our students, what I, what I will say. Is that it's being investigated and I personally question the timeline. Of what is, of what is being accused, but it's being investigated and I have, I I appreciate our administrator doing everything that she was responsible to do. As well as our educator and as well as our district. I, what I do question is the involvement of a state House representative who doesn't even serve that district. And his focus and the intent behind his politicalization of a young child.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. We have another question on this topic. It's from Eric Rogers with Florida Today. His question is, Commissioner Freed, the allegations of threatening and harassing behavior against Ms. Jenkins are well documented, as you said. In the latest instance, it appears she was followed on numerous occasions by a private investigator. The results of which were posted on a website with the apparent purpose of smearing her character. Ms. Jenkins said she has filed a complaint with your office regarding potentially harassing behavior by this private investigator. There is also some question over who hired this PI to follow Ms. Jenkins. Will your office be conducting an investigation? Into this individual and are there circumstances under which your office could compel him to reveal his client?
I guess so. We've received Jennifer's complaint and I believe she amended it over the weekend as well. So we have pulled it and like every other complaint that comes into our office, we take it very seriously, especially to those individuals that are licensed underneath our department. That have been given a license with public trust behind it. So we will be looking into this and we, as soon as we get additional details. We will be going forward and moving to see exactly what's going on and to the full extent of our office. To make sure that that this private investigator, if he is violating his license, then the repercussions that will follow.
Thank you, Commissioner. One final call for questions from journalists. We'll give it just a few more seconds and then Commissioner, if we don't hear anything in the next few seconds, you can go ahead and close it out. Okay, I think we can go ahead and close.
All right. Well, thank you again, everybody, for listening in and thank you, ladies, for for being here and thank you for showing strength during these times. We are still grateful. That you have shared these stories with us here today and I hope you know that your bravery has saved many lives. But I do have a message for our governor. You've heard these stories. Please, work with us, tone down the rhetoric. Let's make sure that we are working together to stop this extremism because it is putting the lives of these school board members and their families at risk. So I heed to you, please, let's tone down the rhetoric, let's work together, let's get our state through this pandemic. And let's move forward as a civilized society, as governor of our state, we are relying on you for this leadership. So please step up, stop the rhetoric, stop the extremism. People are following your lead and this is only exacerbating the situation. So please, let's work together. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. That concludes today's press conference. A replay will be available at facebook.com/fstacks.